Call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Thompson. Thompson absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Pulos.
Here.
Pulos here. Johnson.
Present.
Johnson here. Frausto. Frausto absent. Bellato. Bellato here. Viera. Viera absent. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald here. Osling.
Here.
Osling here. Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, a presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of April the 23rd, 2019. Do I have a motion? Alderman Pittman, second by, we'll do an Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions?
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato. Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Public comment? Yes, sir.
James Hogan, I live on Maple. You put a big hole in the street in front of my house. Uh, when do you plan on fixing it?
From my understanding, the Public Works has been out as a result of all the rain. They've been out attacking the streets.
Yeah, it's, it's been there two months. There's a cone. Are you gonna fix it? Or is it just gonna stay there?
It's gonna be fixed.
Uh, 122nd.
And what?
Uh, in Maple.
Maple is what?
Sawhorse.
Okay, alright.
You'll see it.
Public Works is here, so they made a mail note of it. Okay.
Got it?
You got it? Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. Sarah Brown, 2450 New Street. Also, uh, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce in Blue Island. And, um, I'm speaking on behalf of a ton of people that aren't here tonight and so, but I, I will be recognizing them and I, I just wanna say that I'm speaking on behalf of a ton of people that made, um, something pretty special happen over the weekend. So, I'm gonna grab the mic real quick and show you what we did. Okay? Oh, my God. Alright, if you could, uh, direct your attention to the screen. This past Saturday was Chicago River Day in Blue Island. And, um, it's an effort that we've hosted here in Blue Island for at least four years. And at this particular site, which is Seepa Station Number Three for MWRD, um, it is the third year in a row that we've hosted a cleanup here, um, currently. So, what, what we have here is a couple flower beds and some things. We've been cleaning up litter and invasive plant life for a few years in an effort that involves a lot of entities. But this year, we were able to also clean up and plant in some of these flower beds that had been existing, um, for some time. And so not only do you have a clean park there to look at, you also have some beautiful native plant life. So, we'll just go through these. So, that was the landscape before and after. Val Kejo is a resident of Blue Island and a horticulturist at the University of Illinois Extension Campus. And so she told us what kind of plants we should use and she laid out everything for the landscaping plan. So you can see there's two beds. This is the second bed that was laid out by Val and some volunteers at work. Mayor Vargas was there. Um, Alderman-elect Will Cazares was there. Thank you. And a lot of people who live here and care. Now, we have two, uh, native perennial gardens that are planted at the site. And then today, Public Works came out with some mulch for us. That was me. Get ready for the cameo. Tom Mantel. And of course, uh... This is my daughter in a wheelbarrow. Thank you to Bio's Farm for that wheelbarrow. So, there they are. Now, as they exist, we need a little more mulch to fill in that, that larger bed, as you can see. But certainly an improvement over where we were before. So I just wanted to give a huge thank you to everybody that made it possible because it, it wouldn't have been possible if we didn't have so many people donating their time and their dollars and their, um, materials. Um, starting with Mayor Vargas, um, Alderman-elect William Cazares, Lake Shore Landscaping, who donated so many of those plants. Um, Phase Point Marina donated the gloves. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, the Park District donated a vehicle so we could transport all of those plants to and from. And so many of their volunteers were there that day. Um, ACI Enterprises, Inc., they donated a truck so we could transport all of the plants. Um, Rock Island Public House had to drain the keg. Bio's Farm with the wheelbarrow and the farmer's time. Um, the Beer Company, they hosted an after-party for not just us, but everyone in the Southland who participated in Chicago River Day. Um, Council Oak Bonnassori School, uh, the library, the City of Blue Island, Val Kejo, Tom Mantel, Earl Summers, and everyone else who came out to make this possible. Um, we really appreciate it and great job. Thank you so much.
Good evening, 91. Um, I just wanted to announce that we're having our 17th Annual Cop on a Rooftop fundraiser for Special Olympics. It's this Friday, May 17th. It's gonna be at a record 315 Chicagoland Dunkin' locations. Um, police officers will be stationed on rooftops at 315 participating Dunkin' locations across the state of Illinois, collecting money for Law Enforcement Torch Run to benefit the Special Olympics of Illinois. Um, this year's Special Olympics fundraisers are aiming to surpass last year's grand total of $871,000. Since 2003, the event has raised more than $4.8 million for Special Olympics. So come on out this Friday, uh, May 17th, at Dunkin', at 127 and Gregory, from 5:00 a.m. until noon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We move on. Report of city officials, presentations of resolutions. Number one on the agenda, certification of the April 2nd, 2019, consolidated general election for the Cook County Clerk. And it reads as follows. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes for the City of Blue Island, consolidated election held on April the 2nd, 2019, hereby certifies the following vote totals, and I'll read them as follows. First Ward Alderman Annette Alexander, 163 votes. Second Ward Alderman William Cazares, 174 votes. Third Ward Alderman Nancy Rita, 175 votes. Fourth Ward Alderman Bill Farrenwald, 205 votes. Fifth Ward Alderman for four years, John Ringo Hill, 153 votes. Fifth Ward Alderman for two years, term Mike Meck, 217 votes. Sixth Ward Alderman Rayanne Cantello-Zelman, 222 votes. Seventh Ward Alderman, four-year term, Alicia Slattery, 203 votes. And Seventh Ward Alderman, two-year term, Jim Clinker, 292 votes, according to that. I'm gonna come down regarding the plaques issued to outgoing... Okay. Plaque issued to outgoing Alderman. I'm gonna read them about, as follows. Even if the Alderman isn't here, I'm gonna still read them. And the first one. Reads as follows. And this is presented, and see it has a photo on it. Uh, presented to Hyro Frausto Alderman. In appreciation for your service, your commitment to public service, your ward and your constituents. A great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, ideas, and most of all, their time to their communities. And we thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island from 2011 to 2019. And this will be handed to Alderman Frausto. Alderman Pulos. I'm gonna do this so that you're facing this way. Okay. And this goes to Alderman George Pulos. In appreciation for your commitment to public service, again, your ward and your constituents. A great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, ideas, and most of all, their time to their communities. And again, thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island from 2015 to 2019.
I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
I wrote a seven-page speech, but I said, no, no time for that. Real simple advice to everybody who is, uh, participating tonight, the new Alderman, the one going out, and the citizens. That remember, the city comes first, the party comes second. Do not get caught up in tribalism. Do not get caught up in, oh, he did, pettiness. Just be, be pro-Blue Island, whatever it takes to make the city work. Because this is our home. This is our home. This is where we live. We don't poop where we live. Remember that? So let's be careful of that. Let's be all kind to each other. Try to be kind to each other. That's my only words I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Thompson's not here, but again, I'm gonna read it. This is presented to Nancy L. Thompson, Alderman. Again, in appreciation for your commitment to public service, again, to your ward and to your constituents. A great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, their ideas, and most of all, their time to their communities. We want to thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island from 2011 to 2019. So let's hear it up for Alderman. Again, this is to Alderman Netece Viera. Again, in appreciation for your commitment to public service, your ward and your constituents. A great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, ideas, and most of all, their time to their communities. Thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island. This goes from 2004 to 2019. To Alderman Netece Viera. Alderman Ken Pittman. Alderman, we present this to Alderman Ken Pittman. Again, in appreciation for your commitment to public service, to your ward and to your constituents. Again, a great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, their ideas, and most of all, their time to their communities. We want to thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island from 2013 to 2019. Congratulations, Alderman.
As I said previously, it was a privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of Blue Island. And I'm deeply grateful to you all. Thank you.
Alderman Jan Askin. Alderman Jan Askin Alderman. Again, in appreciation for your commitment to public service, to your ward and to your constituents. A great city is only as great as those persons who give their talents, their ideas, and most of all, their time, everything their time to their communities. Thank you for serving as Alderman of the City of Blue Island 1995 to 2019. So let's hear it up for Jan Askin Alderman. The mic's yours.
Well, wow. Um, I just wanna thank the residents of the fifth, and actually, the sixth ward, when I started. They came out and voted for me quite helpfully for 24 years. Thank you.
City Clerk, please. At this time, we'll be squirreling in the newly-elected Alderman. The elected officials. And we'll start recording. But I have Annette Alexander. We're gonna have you face the camera. I'm gonna need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Annette Alexander.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderman of the First Ward in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the First Ward in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. And as each Alderman comes up, we're gonna need you to sign. And when you have a certificate, it's all over here. So, clerk, we're gonna have you to... William Cazares. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Having been elected to the office of Alderman, Second Ward, City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Second Ward in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. So help me God. So, congratulations. Nancy Rita's next here. Jesus, bless you, Alderman. Bill Farrenwald. Need you to raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Bill Farrenwald.
Having been elected
Having been elected.
to the office
To the office.
of Alderman
Of Alderman.
of the Fourth Ward of the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Fourth Ward in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Johnny Ringo. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Aye, Johnny Ringo. Having been elected Having been elected. to the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. So help me God. So, congratulations. Mr. Michael Meck. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Michael Meck. Having been elected Having been elected. to the office to the office. of the Fifth Ward of the City of Blue Island of the City of Blue Island County of Cook County of Cook State of Illinois State of Illinois do solemnly swear do solemnly swear that I will support that I will support the Constitution the Constitution of the United States of America of the United States of America and the Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Illinois of the State of Illinois and I will faithfully discharge and I will faithfully discharge the duties the duties of the office of the office of Alderman of Alderman of the Fifth Ward of the Fifth Ward in the City of Blue of the City of Blue Island County of Cook County of Cook State of Illinois State of Illinois to the best of my ability. to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. Rayanne Cantello-Zelman. Raise your right hand. Aye. State your name. Having been elected to the office of Alderman of the Sixth Ward of the City of Blue Island the County of Cook State of Illinois do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Sixth Ward in the City of Blue Island County of Cook State of Illinois to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Alicia Slattery, Alderman Slattery. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Having been elected to the office of Alderman Seventh Ward City of Blue Island County of Cook State of Illinois do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Seventh Ward in the City of Blue Island County of Cook State of Illinois to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Mr. Jim Clinker. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, James Clinker.
Having been elected
Having been elected
to the office of Alderman of the Seventh Ward in the City of Blue Island County of Cook State of Illinois do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman of the Seventh Ward in the City of Blue Island County of Cook State of Illinois to the best of my ability. So help me God. So, congratulations. Yes. Before we go, I'd say anything else on the city clerk to get back up here? We're gonna do a roll call of all the... You tell me when you're ready, Mr. Clerk.
Ringo Hill.
Aye.
Carr. It's just a roll call.
Here.
Here. Oh, I hit him down at the bottom. Meck.
Aye.
Uh, Meck here. Uh, Cantello-Zelman.
Aye.
Here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Clinker. Clinker here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here. Alexander. Alexander here. Bellato. Bellato here. Cazares.
Here.
Cazares here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue. Donahue here. Holly. Holly here. Farrenwald. Farrenwald here. Thirteen present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to the next, uh, point of interest. I made an appointment with David Brown to the Plant Commission. That's information to the council regarding Mayor's announcement. Okay, could I have a... Just a general motion. Could I have a motion to concur? Vol. Valman, Farrenwald, Sam Valman, Tom Holley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. On the mayor's announcement, I want to congratulate all the newly-elected Alderman. Looking forward to working together very closely. Thank you for the best interest of the City of Blue Island. City Clerk, any business?
Yeah, I have one item this evening, Your Honor. Need a motion to approve a request from St. Benedict Catholic Church to hold their St. Benedict Fest on Saturday, July 13th, 2019, from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Street closure starting at 8:00 a.m. for Santa.
Alright, there your motion. Well, Slattery, do you have a second? Alderman Clinker? Any questions?
Ringo Hill.
Here.
Ringo Hill, aye. Meck. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander. Alexander, aye. Bellato. Bellato, aye. Cazares.
Aye.
Cazares, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Thirteen ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any bids, city clerk?
No bids.
City Treasurer. Again, I want to welcome all, uh, new elected officials in the packet that... I know you probably didn't receive one, but there's the State of the Treasury. The Treasury's report ending April 30th, 2019. I need a motion, please. Motion by any of the Alderman? Alderman Slattery, Alderman Carr, Second Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ringo Hill.
Aye.
Ringo Hill, aye. Carr.
Meck.
I'm sorry, Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello-Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello-Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.